Good evening. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise welcomes you to the public hearing for the project development and environment or PDNE study for Central Polk Parkway from US Highway 17 to State Road 60 in Polk County, Florida. Financial project identification number 440897-4. I would like to formally open the public hearing. Today is Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, and the time is approximately 6 o'clock. My name is Stephanie Underwood, and I'm the Florida's Turnpike Enterprise Project Manager with HNTB for this PDNE study. I will be moderating this public hearing from the Turnpike headquarters. Tom Presby is the Consultant Project Manager from Kissinger Campo and Associates, or KCA. Tom is overseeing the in-person location at the WH Stewart Center in Bartow, Florida. We are both being supported by representatives of the Florida's Turnpike and KCA staff. At this time, I would like to recognize all federal, state, county, or city officials who are attending online or in person at Stewart Center. Online, we have Commissioner Tracy Mercer with the City of Winter Haven. We have Rashana White, NEPA Project Officer with the US Environmental Perfection Agency, and Darren Verde on behalf of the US Representative Darren Soto. Tom, do we have any officials at the Stewart Center?
Good evening, Stephanie. There are no elected or appointed officials here tonight at the Stewart Center.
Thank you, Tom. We will now begin her show-ed narrated formal presentation about the project.
Good evening. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise welcomes you to the public hearing for the project development and environment study, or PDNE study of Central Polk Parkway, also known as State Road 570B, from US Highway 17 to State Road 60 in Polk County. The proposed roadway evaluated in this study will extend Central Polk Parkway as a new four-lane toll road, which includes a new interchange at US Highway 17, a signalized intersection at State Road 60, and a parallel multi-use recreational trail. This public hearing is being held to provide you with the opportunity to comment on this project. If you happen to experience any technical issues during the hearing, please send an email to tpkmeetingsupport@dot.state-fl.us to report it. Turnpike staff will do their best to assist you. This hearing is being conducted in a hybrid format to provide multiple opportunities for the public to receive information and provide input. This approach uses both a virtual and a face-to-face component. There is no cost to the public to participate in the hearing. We will follow the agenda shown on this slide, starting first with the purpose of the public hearing and how you can comment and ask questions. We will then review the preferred project alternative and open the public comment period. Those of you who have joined virtually or online will be invited to complete a short survey when exiting the webinar. You can also participate in the survey by completing the exit survey on the back of the comment form when you submit your written comments. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvement, its conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, cultural, natural, and physical impacts on the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions and comments regarding the project. Public participation is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. There have been various opportunities for the public to provide input on this project. A June 18th, 2019 public information meeting was one such opportunity, where 139 people attended the meeting, and 41 written comments were submitted and addressed. In advance of this public hearing, interested persons were encouraged to review project information and to contact the project manager with any comments and questions. We continue to encourage public input to help us make this important decision. There are several options for providing written comments. You can submit written comments at the project website, www centralpolkparkway.com. If you're attending the hearing in person at the Stewart Center, you can complete a printed comment form and drop it in the comment box. You can email the project manager with your written comments directly. And lastly, you can mail in your written comments. The project manager's contact information will be spelled out for the benefit of our listen-only participants towards the end of this presentation. This information is also available on the hearing notification that you may have received by mail. You can also provide verbal comments. Virtual participants that requested to speak when registering will be called upon during the public comment period. If attending in person at the Stewart Center, you can fill out a speaker request card to comment at the microphone during the public comment period. There is also a court reporter at the Stewart Center to whom you can provide your comments directly. Lastly, you can call the project manager at 407-264-3436 to provide verbal comments during normal business hours after the public hearing. Every comment method carries equal weight. While comments and questions will be accepted at any time, those submitted by March 1st, 2021, 20 calendar days after the public hearing, will become part of the study's public hearing record. We will respond to all comments and questions in writing at a later date. This public hearing is being recorded, and a verbatim transcript will be made of all oral proceedings. The public hearing video will be posted to the project website, www centralpolkparkway.com, in the video section by Friday, February 12th, 2021. A link to the video will also be provided by email to all persons that registered. This public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements as shown on this slide. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either Florida's Turnpike Enterprise or the Tallahassee Office of the Florida Department of Transportation. This contact information is shown here, on a sign displayed at the Stewart Center, and on the project website. The project involved coordination with the Florida Department of Transportation, District 1, the Polk Transportation Planning Organization, Polk County, the cities of Bartow and Winterhaven, the Bartow Executive Airport, affected property owners, and various state and federal elected officials and regulatory agencies. This public hearing was advertised in the Florida Administrative Register, FDOT's Public Notices website, and the Lakeland Ledger newspaper. In addition, adjacent property owners, interested individuals, elected and appointed officials, Native American tribes, and government agencies were notified about tonight's public hearing. Draft project documents are available for public viewing until March 1st, 2021, at the Bartow City Clerk's Office, by appointment only. Individuals who would like to view the document should call the City Clerk's Office at 863-534-0100, or email records custodian@cityofbartow.net. The office is located at 450 North Wilson Avenue in Bartow, Florida. A second document viewing location is at the Polk Transportation Planning Organization with no appointment necessary. The Polk Transportation Planning Organization is located at 330 West Church Street in Bartow, Florida. Project documents are also available on the project website at www centralpolkparkway.com. A PDNE study from Polk Parkway to Interstate 4 was completed by the Florida Department of Transportation, or FDOT District 1, in 2011. FDOT District 1 began the design of Central Polk Parkway from Polk Parkway to just south of US Highway 17 in 2013, and stopped design services in 2016. In 2017, FDOT District 1 transferred the Central Polk Parkway project to Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. The Polk Transportation Planning Organization adopted the Central Polk Parkway from Polk Parkway to US Highway 17 project into their long-range transportation plan in December 2017 as their number-one priority project. The Polk Transportation Planning Organization's resolution of December 2017 also requested Florida's Turnpike Enterprise to conduct a PDNE study extending Central Polk Parkway Segment 1 from US 17 to State Road 60. In 2018, Florida's Turnpike Enterprise began the PDNE study. Throughout the study phase, the project team evaluated right-of-way requirements, an interchange at US Highway 17, environmental impacts within the project corridor, and an intersection at State Road 60. The limits of this PDNE study are from north of US Highway 17 to State Road 60 in Polk County. Please note that north is oriented to the top of the screen. The project begins north of US Highway 17 and connects to the adjacent Central Polk Parkway Segment 1 design project from Polk Parkway to US Highway 17 to the north. The study limits extend approximately 2.2 miles to the south to State Road 60, crossing US Highway 17 and Peace Creek. The purpose and need for a project provides the basis for developing, evaluating, and eliminating project alternatives. This project's purpose and need are to enhance safety, improve accessibility and mobility, enhance emergency evacuation, and address forecasted year 2045 traffic needs while avoiding or minimizing environmental impacts. The study team developed and evaluated multiple project alternatives, including some that connected directly to State Road 60 rather than 91 Mine Road. Engineering and environmental evaluations were performed, and local agency and public input were solicited. The preferred project alternative is the one that best meets the project purpose and need. Three build alternatives were originally developed on mostly undeveloped land to satisfy the purpose and need for this PDNE study: Alternatives 1, 2, and 3. Alternative 3 was eliminated from further evaluation due to the anticipated business damages and right-of-way acquisition costs associated with Tico Solar Panel Farm at the southern end of the alignment. Alternatives 1 and 2 were presented to the public during the public information meeting held on June 18th, 2019. As a result of this meeting, there was public concern for additional traffic along 91 Mine Road. A new hybrid alternative, Alternative 4, was developed to address these concerns by utilizing most of the Alternative 1 alignment, but providing an intersection with State Road 60 instead of 91 Mine Road. Upon further engineering and environmental evaluation, Alternative 4 was selected as the preferred alternative to address public comments while balancing wetland impacts, unsuitable soils remediation, right-of-way acquisition, and construction costs. The proposed typical section includes two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction: 12-foot outside shoulders, a 74-foot median which will accommodate future widening to six lanes, 8-foot inside shoulders, and open roadside ditches on both sides of the roadway. The proposed limited access right-of-way corridor is 310 feet wide. A 12-foot multi-use recreational trail is proposed within a 26-foot right-of-way corridor, which parallels Central Polk Parkway along the east side of the roadway, pending execution of an operations and maintenance agreement with Polk County. The concept plans were developed to highlight the preferred alternative and to better illustrate all of the proposed improvements for this project. The project layout for the preferred alternative is shown on this slide with north oriented to the left of the screen. Please note that a PDNE concept plan is preliminary, and more detailed plans will be completed during the design phase. In the bottom right-hand corner of the plan is the legend. At the beginning of the PDNE study, the project connects to the adjacent Central Polk Parkway Segment 1 design project from Polk Parkway to US Highway 17. The brown shown on the concept drawing shows the limits of the roadway improvements, and the orange shows proposed bridges to be completed under the design project. The design project connects to US Highway 17 with two at-grade signalized intersections as shown on the slide. The PDNE study's preferred alternative extends Segment 1 with two new ramps to provide a diamond interchange at US Highway 17. The two signalized intersections will be used to access the new toll roadway. To illustrate the operations of the US Highway 17 interchange, let's first look at the traffic movements from US Highway 17 to eastbound Central Polk Parkway. Please note, north is oriented towards the top of the screen. Northbound US Highway 17 traffic will merge onto eastbound Central Polk Parkway using the new interchange ramp. Southbound US Highway 17 traffic will exit using the new US Highway 17 signalized intersection to merge onto eastbound Central Polk Parkway using the new interchange ramp. Now looking at the traffic movements from westbound Central Polk Parkway to US Highway 17, traffic traveling westbound on Central Polk Parkway will exit on the new ramp to merge onto northbound US Highway 17, or use the signalized intersection to travel southbound on US Highway 17. The preferred alternative crosses over Peace Creek south of the US Highway 17 interchange. The Peace Creek crossing includes three parallel bridge structures at this location to reduce impacts to the Peace Creek floodway and surrounding wetlands, two for Central Polk Parkway approximately 2,500 feet long, and one for the multi-use recreational trail of 2,200 feet long. The preferred alternative connects to State Road 60 by means of an at-grade intersection. Please note, north is oriented towards the top of the screen. Two signalized intersections along State Road 60 are proposed at the Central Polk Parkway and 91 Mine Road intersections to access the new toll roadway. At the State Road 60 intersection, eastbound and westbound State Road 60 traffic will enter westbound Central Polk Parkway using the new State Road 60 signalized intersection. From eastbound Central Polk Parkway to State Road 60, traffic traveling eastbound on Central Polk Parkway will exit using the new State Road 60 signalized intersection to travel eastbound or westbound on State Road 60. Access management modifications are proposed as part of the roadway improvements along US Highway 17 and State Road 60. The proposed modifications are required to promote safe and efficient traffic movements within the interchanges. Due to the proposed limited access right-of-way and new traffic signals within the US Highway 17 interchange, several driveways are proposed to be removed, and maintaining direct access to properties is not possible. As a result, residential and business relocations are anticipated, which are designated with white dots on the concept plan. A new driveway is proposed along the south side of US Highway 17 east of the proposed limited access right-of-way limits to reduce the number of relocations. Due to the close proximity of the Central Polk Parkway and 91 Mine Road intersections, the traffic signals will be synchronized to operate together to promote safe travel and reduce traffic delay along State Road 60 and local access from 91 Mine Road and Connorsville Road. Turn lanes are proposed for both intersections to allow for safe deceleration to access Central Polk Parkway and the surrounding development. The existing median opening servicing Peace Creek Road is proposed to be closed, and the intersection with Peace Creek Road will be limited to right-in, right-out only. Please note that north is oriented to the left of the screen. The preferred alternative that we are presenting for public input includes the following main features: constructing the Central Polk Parkway mainline with four travel lanes and a proposed separate, parallel, multi-use recreational trail; constructing a new diamond interchange at US Highway 17; constructing two roadway bridges and one proposed recreational trail bridge over Peace Creek; and constructing a new signalized intersection at State Road 60 and providing a traffic signal at the intersection of 91 Mine Road and State Road 60. The full concept plan of the preferred alternative is available on the project website for your review. The "no-build" or "do-nothing" alternative is also under consideration. This alternative examines what happens if the project is not built. There are advantages and disadvantages to the "no-build" alternative, as shown on the slide. The preferred alternative was evaluated in detail to analyze potential effects to the social, cultural, natural, and physical environment in accordance with state and federal regulations. These evaluations are documented in the State Environmental Impact Report, which is available for public review. The evaluation matrix shown here summarizes the evaluation results of the preferred alternative. It is also available for review on the project website and at the Stewart Center. We will now discuss the evaluation results in more detail in the following slides. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary right-of-way acquisition and relocations. The total right-of-way needs for the preferred alternative is 146 acres. On this project, we anticipate the potential relocation of nine residential and three business sites. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you are being moved and you are unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution: If you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. If you have any questions, you may call Florida's Turnpike Right-of-Way Project Manager, George Moreno, at 407-264-3037, who will be happy to answer your questions. They will also furnish you with copies of Relocation Assistance Brochures that are also available on our website. A cultural resource assessment survey was completed for this PDNE study. Based on background research and field investigations, no historic resources or archaeological sites which are listed, determined eligible, or appear potentially eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places were found. Coordination with the State Historic Preservation Office is continuing. The proposed improvements will potentially impact 14.53 acres of wetlands and 7.11 acres of surface waters. The wetlands are within, or adjacent, to the proposed roadway right-of-way. The FDOT will mitigate wetland impacts resulting from this project's construction to meet state and federal requirements. Threatened and endangered species are afforded special protection under the Endangered Species Act of 1973 (as amended) and Florida statutes. The proposed project has taken all practicable measures to avoid and minimize impacts to potentially occurring protected species and their habitats. Through an assessment of species and their habitats within the project limits and through ongoing coordination with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, it was determined that construction of the preferred alternative may affect three federally listed species: the sand skink, the blue-tailed mole skink, and the Florida bonneted bat. Surveys and further consultation regarding these species with the US Fish and Wildlife Service and Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission will be conducted during the design phase. The project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, several other federally listed species such as the eastern indigo snake and wood stork. Portions of the proposed project are within the 100-year floodplain and identified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, as being in either two floodplain zone types: Zone A and Zone AE. The preferred alternative will impact approximately 43 acres of floodplains. The project also crosses the FEMA regulatory floodway at Peace Creek, which will be bridged. Encroachments into the floodplain will be mitigated by providing compensation within the same floodplain. Four floodplain compensation ponds are proposed in the preferred alternative. A total of 22 potential contamination sites were identified within the project study area. Of those sites, 15 sites received a risk rating of medium or high. These sites will be further evaluated during the design phase to identify options to avoid, minimize, or mitigate contamination involvement. A noise study was conducted in accordance with state and federal regulations to evaluate traffic noise levels for the proposed improvements. Noise levels were evaluated at 74 residences and Gordon Heights Park. For design-year 2045 conditions, noise levels at one residence near US Highway 17 are predicted to approach, meet, or exceed the noise abatement criteria. However, because FDOT policy requires two or more impacted receptors to be benefited in order for a noise wall to be feasible, a noise wall is not considered a feasible abatement measure for the impacted residents. In addition, compared to existing monitored conditions, noise levels for design-year 2045 preferred alternative conditions are not predicted to substantially increase at any residence evaluated. Therefore, based on the noise analysis performed to date, there appears to be no feasible or reasonable noise abatement measures. Noise impacts will be reevaluated during the design phase. We encourage you to call the Turnpike Project Manager if you have any questions regarding the noise study. The total project cost for the preferred alternative is approximately $173.4 million in 2020 dollars. These costs include nearly $1.5 million for wetland mitigation, $19.7 million for right-of-way acquisition, $2.1 million for toll equipment, $121.2 million for construction, and $28.8 million for engineering services. We continue to encourage public input to help us make this important decision. You can submit written comments at the project website, www centralpolkparkway.com. If at the Stewart Center, you can complete a printed comment form. You can email the project manager directly. And for the benefit of our listen-only participants, the project manager's contact information is Stephanie Underwood, spelled S-T-E-P-H-A-N-I-E-U-N-D-E-R-W-O-O-D, at Florida's Turnpike Enterprise, Post Office, Box 613069, Ocoee, Florida, 34761. Her telephone number is 407-264-3436. Her email address is stephanie.underwood@dot.state-fl.us. While written comments and questions are accepted at any time, they must be received or postmarked no later than March 1st, 2021, to become part of the public hearing record. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. The comment period again will close March 1st, 2021, and your input will be considered. The final PDNE document will then be provided to the Chief Executive Officer of Florida's Turnpike Enterprise for approval. The PDNE study was initiated in the summer of 2018 and is expected to be completed in the spring of 2021. Future project phases of the preferred alternative include design, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and maintenance. This project has and will continue to comply with all applicable state and federal rules and regulations. This concludes the presentation. We appreciate your interest in this PDNE study. Anyone desiring to make a verbal statement regarding the location, conceptual design, or social, economic, and environmental effects of the improvements will now have an opportunity to do so.
We will now begin the public comment period. Please note that we will not respond to your comments and questions today, but we will respond in writing at a later date. Before we start receiving your comments, I would like to recognize any additional federal, state, county, or city officials who have joined us since the initial introductions and are attending online or in person at the Stewart Center. Online, we do not have any new officials or appointed, elected or appointed officials. Tom, do we have any additional officials at the Stewart Center?
Hello, Stephanie. There are no additional elected or appointed officials present here at the Stewart Center tonight.
Thank you, Tom. As a reminder, you can provide verbal comments in one of four ways. First, if attending in person, please complete a speaker request card and turn it in to one of our staff members. You will be called upon later to approach the microphone to give your comment. Second, virtually or online if you requested to speak during registration through GoToWebinar. Third, speak directly to the court reporter at the Stewart Center. And lastly, you can call me at 407-264-3436 during normal business hours after the public hearing to provide your verbal comments. We will now call upon the in-person participants at the Stewart Center who have requested to speak. Please come to the microphone when your name is called and state your name and address. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Tom, is there anyone at the Stewart Center that desires to speak?
Stephanie, we have not received a comment card. However, is anyone in attendance tonight here at the Stewart Center that would like to make a comment? Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. Stephanie, there's no one in attendance tonight that would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now call upon our online participants who requested to speak at registration. When you are unmuted by the organizer, please also make sure to unmute your microphone using the GoToWebinar control panel as shown on this slide. State your name and address. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The first name that we have on our list is Ms. Nanette Gray. Ms. Gray, if you can unmute yourself. Okay, we can come back to Ms. Gray. The next person on our list is Mr. John Ryan. Okay, well then we'll go on to the next person, Mr. Jackson Hurst.
Hi, my name is Jackson Hurst, and I live at 4216 Cornell Crossing, Kennesaw, Georgia, 30144. And first off, I was in attendance. I was a virtual attendee for the Central Polk Parkway Design Project from US 17 to Polk Parkway. And I will repeat what I said at that public hearing, which is I approve and support the Central Polk Parkway extension because it will provide economic incentives and also an alternative to I-IV. And last, it will also provide increased access into Central Polk County, especially the suburban portion of the county below Lakeland, Florida.
Thank you. The next person is David Price. Mr. Price.
Hello.
Okay, perfect.
Hi, I'm David Price. I live in Lake Wales and president of Baccarat Gardens. And I just really appreciate the addition of the multi-use pathway alongside this corridor. And I encourage you to pursue that. I think there are some qualifiers with, if the county is willing to take care of the maintenance on that. So I just encourage both the county and DOT to pursue that agreement. I did mention this back when the Central Florida Parkway was first, we were first talking about this, this many, many years ago. Of my concern that there's not a light rail associated with this corridor. And I think that that would be something, this could be very important as we're looking at this corridor to take us to, you know, to 2050. The corridor will come within about seven miles, I think in Point Sienna where there's light rail now going into Orlando. So I just encourage the engineers to consider that. It's going to be very important in our future. There may not be a need now, but I guarantee you there will be a need in the coming decades. I appreciate you letting me make these comments.
Thank you very much. We're going to go back to Ms. Gray, Nanette Gray. Again, if you can unmute so that we can hear you. There's a little microphone button. Okay, so Ms. Gray, I'll take care of, I've got your email address. So I'll reach out to you and get your comment so that we can record it for the record. I apologize for any technical difficulties with this. And then I'll try one more time with Mr. John Ryan. Okay, well with that, I think that we will conclude the comment period. So... Thank you very much for attending tonight's public hearing for the Central Polk Parkway PDNE study. The verbal transcript of this hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing record and all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing will be made a part of the project decision-making process and will be available at Turnpike Headquarters for public review upon request. Thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input on this project. It is now 6:36 PM, and I hereby officially close the public hearing for the Central Polk Parkway PDNE study from US Highway 17 to State Road 60 in Polk County. Thank you once again, and have a great evening.